Welcome, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel O'Malley. Counselress Presley. Counsel Wu. And Counsel Saugum. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise, counselors and guests, I will invite Counselor Asabi George to introduce today's very special clergy to -- faith leader to deliver our invocation. And after the invocation, please remain standing. Counselor Asabi George will lead us in the pledgeable legion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. I am honored and proud to welcome Sister Catherine O'Leary to open and bless our City Council meeting. I have known Sister Kay for about 18 years and have cherished her kindness, her wisdom, and her humor. As my husband Doug's aunt, she has been a lifelong presence in his life and a loving part of our family. I have come to know and love Sister Kay as my own Aunt Kay. Sister Kay went to St. Margaret Grammar School, as did myself, Doug, and Counselor Baker. She graduated from Monsign -- and the mayor, he's not here, though. And the mayor. She graduated from Monsignor Ryan Memorial High School in Dorchester, also known as MRM, and then committed her life to a higher order, the Sisters of Charity of Halifax. And charity is what she has practiced ever since. She was a teacher at the Lady of Seneca in Richmond, New York, a principal at St. Nicholas in Jamaica, New York. And for the last 30 years, she was director of the Women Helping Women Home in Queens, New York. Although spending most of her career in New York, she is still a daughter of Boston. She has even joined some of the George boys at bachelor parties in New York cheering on the Red Sox against the Yankees. Recently retired, she has returned home to Boston. We feel very proud of Aunt Kay. I'm very proud of Aunt Kay. And I'm so pleased that she is with us today. Welcome, Sister Catherine O'Leary.
Thank you. Thank you, Anisa. Madam President and respected members of the Boston City Council, I call upon our merciful and loving God to bless you as you gather in this chamber and call yourselves to accountable, honest, and effective governance. I ask God to bless you as the call for justice and peace challenges you every day. I ask God to bless you as you make decisions that will affect the lives of people, especially the most vulnerable, the ones who need you most. I ask God to bless you as council members, that you might respect differing viewpoints and that you will be able to keep at it when the result seems slow. I ask God to bless you as you model for your constituents ways of overcoming prejudice, fear, discrimination, and racism as you create new models of moving into the future together. Let us all pray now in thanksgiving for the opportunity you have to make wise decisions that will bring hope and peace where there is confusion and violence, for the opportunity you have to embrace advocacy for systemic change. Let us pray together in thanksgiving for the responsibility you have to eliminate inequality in all its dimensions, from education to opportunity. Let us pray together in thanksgiving for the privilege you have of sharing your insights about our being a human family in a beautiful universe. I bring to each and all of you the support and prayers of the Sisters of Charity of Halifax. We have committed ourselves to the following and have done so for many years. We believe that corporately and individually, we strive to develop a sensitivity towards those whom the world depresses, to right in great ways and small the injustices we see around us, to heal the wounds of the embittered, to speak peace to the troubled, to urge the mighty to right wrongs, that we may bring the compassion of our God to all whose lives we touch. I am sure there are many people who pray as you do, that your efforts on behalf of all the people of Boston will bear fruit. Let us together entrust ourselves to God with the gifts and limitations of the human condition, relying on the faithfulness of the One who calls. Thank you.
Pledgeable Legion. Thank you, Sister Kay, and thank you, Counselor Asabi George and Doug, for sharing her with us this morning. We will now move on to our formal business. Although I do want to recognize how many of us are on the same vibe with the purple memo today. It is the president's favorite color, and Counsel O'Malley, so appreciate that. Okay, are there any objections, edits, or additions to the minutes from last week's meeting? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And Madam Clerk, would you please proceed with communications from His Honor, the Mayor?
Docket number 1258, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $2,172,522 from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Statistics. The grant will be used to transition to the National Incident-Based Reporting System.
Docket number 1258 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1259, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $792,669 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to Boston's Police Department, Boston Regional Intelligence Center, known as the BRIC, to update, expand, and integrate technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism, anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency response.
Docket 1259 will also be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1260, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $211,166 from the U.S. Department of Justice, the Office of Justice Program, National Institute of Justice, to the City of Boston's Police Department to support the FY 2016 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program.
Docket 1260 will also be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1261, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Priscilla Rojas as a member of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Industrial Corporation for a term expiring on September 17, 2021.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to suspend and pass docket 1261, the confirmation and reappointment of Priscilla Rojas. She is currently a member of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and Economic Development Industrial Corporation for the city. And it was just last August that we held a hearing and a subsequent vote where she was unanimously confirmed. So I think that we would like her to continue her work, and she was just finishing the very short end of the original term for the one previous to her. So this will be the initiation of a full term. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Does anyone have any comments? Great. So at this time, Counsel Linehan moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1261. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1261 has been passed, and Priscilla Rojas has been confirmed for her reappointment. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1262, would you like me to read both matters?
Yes, please.
Docket number 1262, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 4:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. on Saturday, September 17, 2016. And docket number 1263, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 8:45 a.m. on Sunday, September 18, 2016, until 6:30 a.m. on Tuesday, September 20, 2016.
Dockets 1262 and 1263 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 0690, the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation, to which was referred on May 11, 2016, docket number 0690, petition of DACO transportation for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers or higher over certain city streets in Boston, submits a report recommending the GIPNI petition ought to be rejected without prejudice.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Parks Recreation and Transportation, Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 23, we did have a hearing in regards to this petition. He did attend, but at that time, he did not meet with the Transportation Department to review the routes that he was requesting. Also at the hearing, the Boston Police Department and the Transportation had some concerns. I did give the commissioner some time to meet with the Transportation Department and the Police Department to go over his routes, but he never came back. So with that, I ask that we deny this petition without prejudice.
Thank you, Counselor. At this time, Counsel Lamatina moves for acceptance of the committee report and therefore a yes vote to deny the petition, to reject the petition without prejudice. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0690 has been passed, and the petition has been rejected without prejudice. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1110, ordinance commending CBC Chapter 18, 18-1.16, modernize the city street occupancy permit program.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. We held the hearing this past Monday on docket 1110 regarding the city's street occupancy permit. The matter was sponsored by our colleague, City Council Josh Saugum, and also joining the hearing was our colleague, City Council Matt O'Malley. This ordinance would amend the fee structure for contractors, construction vehicles, et cetera, to obtain permits from the city to occupy or obstruct portions of the street or sidewalk referred to in CBC Chapter 18. So given the volume of permits that are active and pending in the city, we had asked Ed Hessford from BTD and Anne McNeil from Public Works to come down. They offered testimony on behalf of the administration. We also heard testimony from members of the public, and the topics of which we discussed were compliance, issuers of the permits, the cost of the permits, the capability maybe increasing of the permits because they have not been increased. And Counsel O'Malley, probably remembers better than I, I think it was 1982, maybe it was the last time, so we're operating under 1982 numbers, it's 2016. And given the volume of permits, it may make some sense to adjust, give it a cost-of-living adjustment at the very least. So those are the matters that we had discussed at this time, asking that that remain in committee. I think it's appropriate that we do a working session, get some more input from our colleagues with their respective districts, and decide whether we're going to do something citywide or we're going to do something by zone or district. But it's something that Counsel Saugum is passionate about, given the problems that he is seeing surfacing in his district. So if anyone else wishes to add to that, other than that, would like to keep it in committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Jackson, had you signaled for this? Okay, great. Thank you. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the Chairman, Counsel Flaherty, as well as the lead sponsor, Counsel Saugum. It was actually a very, very interesting hearing, and I look forward to participating in the working session. We're not only talking about vehicles, construction vehicles and heavy equipment, but dumpsters as well. A couple issues that I brought up that we will further be exploring, and there was certainly more than a willingness from the administration to work with us, is better coordination with district counselors as well as at-large counselors in terms of specific neighborhood concerns when streets or sidewalks or bike lanes are closed for an indeterminate amount of time, as well as better coordination with different, both public and private agencies, utility companies, Water and Sewer Commission, to name two. And finally, make sure that we have uniform signage. This is one thing that I think that we need to act on. There are different signage that can be either downloaded, printed out on the internet, which is obviously of great use for constituents, that somehow differs from what is offered at the city. It seems to me that there's an opportunity here to really do something that's worthwhile, protects taxpayers, allows for a better funding mechanism when things go over budget or over schedule, and better assess what we need to do when there's road open or a new construction or a new building being built for any reason. So look forward to the working session. Thank you again to Counsel Flaherty for his leadership.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Flaherty, did you have another comment? Okay. Great. So at this time, docket 1110 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1192, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jane Cooper Brayton as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2019.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Planning and Development held a public hearing in the Ionella Chamber on the 20th. We took testimony from Jeffrey Hampton, who's the Deputy Director of the Zoning Committee and the BRA. Jane Cooper Brayton has served for 15 years as a member of the Zoning Commission. She's a South Endah who's been very active in city governance and in community governance and support. So I ask that my colleagues support the confirmation of Jane Cooper Brayton.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor. Oh, okay. Button malfunction. Counsel Flaherty is taking apart his desk to fix things. Great. Anyone else wish to comment on docket number 1192? Okay, at this time, Counsel Linehan moves for passage of docket 1192 and confirmation of Jane Cooper Brayton. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1192 has been passed, and Jane Cooper Brayton has been confirmed as a member of the Zoning Commission.
Docket number 1193, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kwak Trin to the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Finance Authority for a term expiring April 1, 2020.
Again, Counsel Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Planning and Development held a public hearing on that same day, the 20th. On this particular matter, docket 1193, Bill Nickerson, who's a senior financial manager at the BRA and is responsible to the Board of Directors of the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority. It's a bonding authority that this city and I think only one other in the state of Massachusetts has, and it's one that can be extremely helpful in creating job opportunities throughout our city. We met with Kwak Trin, and he's someone with enormous experience and committed to the community, and ask that you support his confirmation.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Linehan moves for passage of docket 1193 and confirmation of Kwak Trin to the BIDFA, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1193 has been passed, and Kwak Trin has been confirmed.
Docket number 0846, order for hearing regarding the restructuring of the Office of Economic Development.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development, Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. We were unable to have this hearing for different reasons. So at that point, I'd ask the remaining committee, we will have the hearing, but I would like to turn it over to the lead sponsor to see if, or the co-sponsor, to see if either one of them would like to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Although we're very excited and look forward to holding this hearing on the restructuring of the office, especially as it pertains to our Main Streets districts across the city, we were unable to do it this week, but we look forward to rescheduling it with the cooperation of both my co-sponsor, Counsel McCarthy, and Counsel Baker. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Docket number 0846 will remain in the Committee on Jobs, Wages, and Workforce Development.
Docket number 1194, message and order for your approval of the discontinuance by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, known as MassDOT, of a portion of a state highway for the purpose of allowing the City of Boston to perform construction on the North Washington Street Bridge.
Counsel Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for attending yesterday's hearing that I chair and Counsel McCarthy's absence. The Committee on City Neighbor Services and Veterans Affairs held a hearing on docket number 1192 regarding discontinuance by the Mass Department of Transportation of a little portion of state highway at the intersection of North Washington Street and Water Street in Charles Town. Power-facing senior engineer from Public Works was in attendance. This is essentially a little land transfer to enable the city to begin construction on the North Washington Street Bridge. That bridge is 108 years old, and it's fallen down. And so once this transfer is completed, the city can begin to plan for construction. So we could hopefully get this construction started sometime in the summer of 2017. I recommend that we ought to pass this. Also, Madam President, four city councilors must sign a document once we pass this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments on 1194? Okay, at this time, Counsel Lamatina moves for an affirmative vote on docket 1194 to discontinue the state highway and transfer that to the city. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1194 has been passed. Motion, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1264, Counselress Presley offers the following resolution, calling on the U.S. Congress and President Obama to reinstate insurance coverage for abortion services.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm filing this resolution today, and will be calling in for a vote next week. You may be wondering why I'm bringing this federal issue before our city council. It's in part because Boston and Massachusetts are leaders, but also because even here locally, women face barriers in access to a range of safe, affordable, and comprehensive reproductive health care services. This is a disproportionate impact on immigrant women, on women of color, on low-income women who risk falling even deeper into poverty without health insurance that includes coverage of abortion. Now, on September 30, 2016, that will mark the 40th year of the federal Hyde Amendment, which denies women use of Medicaid insurance for abortion. Next week nationally is the Hyde Week of Action, and cities throughout the country are using this anniversary to organize locally by passing resolutions in support of insurance coverage for abortion services. New York, Los Angeles, and Philadelphia all are considering resolutions like this for next week. Some cities that have already passed, city councils that have already passed resolutions, Cambridge, Massachusetts, San Francisco, California, and Seattle, Washington. Now, while Massachusetts to date offers vital health care services to fill the gap left by the federal Hyde Amendment, this is not a permanent guarantee. It may surprise you to know that here in Boston, residents who are members of the Peace Corps or beneficiaries of the Indian Health Services and Military Insurance Programs also with those other insurance programs have this restriction withholding coverage for abortion. Now, whether a woman has private or government-funded health insurance, every woman should have coverage for a full range of pregnancy-related care, and that is including abortion. So I thank you all for considering this resolution today, and will be again calling it for a vote next week, and look forward to speaking with folks if they have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Docket 1264 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 1265, Counsel Jackson offers the following order for a hearing to discuss providing free MBTA M7 combined T bus passes to all ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade high school students in Boston.
Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to substitute with the updated version of this.
Okay, does everyone have the updated version in front of you?
Yeah.
And could you just clarify, Counsel, what the change is?
The updated version actually removes some financial assumptions that we made, and I'm going to turn that part over to BPS to actually determine how much some of these things actually cost.
Okay, great. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none, we will be discussing 1265 in a new draft, and please proceed, Counsel Jackson.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I put forward an order for hearing to discuss providing free MBTA M7 monthly passes for every single student in Boston public, private, as well as poor-fields schools throughout the city of Boston. What we have found, and just some data, when you're a middle school student, you get a pass at 1.5 mile. When you are a high school student, you get a pass at 2 mile. That is a huge issue for dealing with issues of the opportunity and achievement gap. I've heard from several teachers that teachers are actually coming out of their pocket to pay for passes for students who are receiving the S-pass, which is a savings pass. An S-pass will cost a student and family a minimum of $306 per year. Many people, and I just spoke with a parent who has three students who go to Boston Latin Schools, so that's nearing $1,000 for transportation for their student. In addition, we have to deal with the very real reality of the safety of our female students who are passing through neighborhoods where there's potentially visible prostitution. What we've learned, and I want to thank Counsel Presley for the work that she's been doing around human trafficking, as well as Counsel Baker. In listening, I've heard that typically these individuals target people who have routines, such as going to school every single morning. In addition, the curriculum of Boston Arts Academy, Edward M. Kennedy Health Careers Academy, requires students to travel throughout the city to fulfill their responsibility. The focus of Boston public schools has been around closing the opportunity and achievement gap. You can't close that opportunity and achievement gap if young people can't get to school. This is a very real equity issue, and Boston belongs to the students across the city. We have a historic city, and all of our young people should be able to get to and around all of the city, and the city of Boston should really be their classroom. This would be a proposed filler that would cost less than $500,000 to ensure that all of our young people have an opportunity to get in and around the city. And I just reflect on, I was a student that got reduced lunch, and I reflect on a time when I actually went and didn't actually have the money to pay for my lunch, and I didn't go back to get lunch for two weeks because I was embarrassed. Many of these young people and their families should not be put into that situation. It is a right to be able to go to school. We should ensure that people are able to actually get there. We should ensure that people are able to actually get there and to be able to close that opportunity and achievement gap. So I look forward to expediting a hearing and dealing with these issues. And I know as councilors, this time of year is the time of year that we get many calls around issues of transportation. Let's get ahead of this, and let's do right by our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor O'Malley's name? Please add Counselor Campbell, Counselor Sabby George, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Linehan, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Presley, Counselor Flaherty. Please add the chair. Docket 1265 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. Okay, I am sorry to report that there are two late filed matters today, and even sorrier that one of them is mine, but I will explain why. The first one is from Counselor Zachem explaining his absence, and Madam Clerk, would you please read that first late filed matter into the record?
From Counselor Josh Zachem. On September 20, 2016, "Dear President, will please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, September 21, 2016, due to a death in the family." Please ask the city clerk to read this matter into the record sincerely, Josh Zachem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that first late filed matter will be placed on file. Could you please read the second late filed matter?
Order of Council President Michelle Wu, City Council Biannual Urban Renewal Progress Update Hearing. Be it ordered that the Boston City Council's Committee on Planning and Development will hold biannual urban renewal progress update hearings from the Boston Redevelopment Authority beginning in September 2016. Pursuant to the City Council's March 23, 2016 approval of a six-year extension to 14 urban renewal zones, the Boston Redevelopment Authority's commitment to providing public updates twice a year to the Boston City Council was further codified by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development's approval of the urban renewal zone extensions on August 3, 2016. Representatives of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and other interested parties shall attend filed on September 21, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is really just procedural to create a docket number so that we can attach the six-month check-ins to a docket since we voted on the original one and then it was wiped from our legislative docket. So any comments on urban renewal or the hearings? The first one is scheduled for September 30 between Counselor Linehan's office, the BRA, and other offices, and we just needed to do this so that we would be able to have the docket in time to publicly notice it. Counselor Jackson?
Madam President, I just want to lodge an issue that is gravely concerning to the way that the BRA has moved forward. They are now calling for the extension of their ability to have urban renewal as a minor modification. That is a problem that this body does not currently, will not in the future have to vote on the BRA being in existence and their powers being in existence. I think that usurps the power of the Boston City Council. I don't think it is actually consistent with the law, and I think it is, should be a concern for the Boston City Council that essentially we've been cut out of the extension of a huge power in the city of Boston. So I hope they come ready to address how they were able to convince the state of Massachusetts through the Department of DHCD that extending for six years is a minor modification. And also, that means that the vote that we took is not a vote that actually stand, actually needed to be taken or stood at the state level, and I find that to be very problematic.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Just so everybody is aware and on the same page about this, Counselor Jackson's referring to the DHCD's approval letter, which essentially codified much of the council's arrangement that we voted on, very clearly outlined that in several points that the BRA must adhere to over the course of their extension, added some requirements, including one that if they plan to extend beyond the six years, they will actually have to notify DHCD in three years and give them that much time notice. My own personal opinion on that matter was that it comes down to whether, it comes down to how DHCD is defining the word "mere." So they said a mere extension of time would be considered a minor modification, but I think it's up, there's a gray zone. So we should certainly address that on Friday, at next Friday's hearing, and consider writing a council letter on that matter too to clarify to DHCD. But I will defer to Counselor Linehan, the chair of the Planning and Development Committee, for clarification.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, as I understand it, as the chair, even minor modification, we will be notified of, and we have the ability to call the BRA down in front of this body at a hearing to articulate that, and the results of that hearing will be reported back to the BRA Board. So if we don't support it, it would at least be articulated prior to any Boston Redevelopment Authority Board confirmation of a minor modification. So as I understand it, that's what our process articulated for the minor modification.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan, and thank you for working to find a date for the hearing, which I believe is the 30th at 10 a.m. Is that correct? So in order to publicly notice it, we need to have the docket number, so keep an eye out for that. But that is a date that we, that is a date in time we are holding for now, and it will be followed up by the public notice. Thank you. Anyone wish to pull a matter from the green sheets? No, great. So again, there are two late filed matters to add to the consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added, and the chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. Oh, apologies, thank you. So after all of that, the second late filed matter needs to be referred to the Committee on Planning and Development, technically. Okay, so again, although, the chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The consent agenda has been adopted. Are there any announcements or comments before we move to adjourn? None. Okay, so I'd like to ask all councilors and guests to please rise, and the council will adjourn in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Dorothy Giuliano and Ann Tean. For Counselor Campbell, Patty Christine Tillman Skeens, Juwan's grandmother. For Counselor Linehan, Genevieve Zablocki. For Counselor McCarthy, John F. Jack McCarthy, Counselor McCarthy's uncle. For Counselor O'Malley, Mary Ann Patton. For Counselor Zachem, Jonathan Zachem, Counselor Zachem's cousin. And for all councilors, Virginia Jenny McCarthy, Counselor McCarthy's mother-in-law. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and meet again Wednesday, September 28 at 12 noon. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Eyes have it, council is adjourned.